I'd like to call the Tuesday, November the 7th, 2023 Alexander County Board of Education to meet, meeting to order at this time. Uh, I'd like to take just a moment prior to starting to mention an individual that I had an opportunity to meet a few years ago that, that gave forty-three years of his life to our school system. Tom Millsaps passed away, he had his funeral on Saturday, and I would like to extend our condolences on behalf of the board to his family, and I'm sorry for getting emotional, but I had an opportunity to meet Tom. If you ever worked around any of his family, I never worked for Tom, but he had three siblings that also retired from our school system. He has a son that has given over thirty-some years to our maintenance department. So please join us and remember the Millsaps family as they adjust to life without Tom and Mrs. Josephine while they care for her. And I just want to take a moment, uh, someone gives that much time, I want to make sure that we, uh, mention, uh, and let that family know we're thanking and praying for them. And at this time, I would like to recognize Brianna and Hannah McCall from Hidnite Elementary School to lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, girls.
Board members, you have the agenda in front of you. What is the pleasures board for adoption of the agenda?
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion by board member Aguas, second by board member Reese, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. At this time, I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for our honors and recognitions portion of the agenda.
Thank you Chairman Robinson and board members, but actually I am going to invite a fellow board member, Bridgette Ryan, to the podium. Mrs. Ryan, she does lots of things in Alexander County, but one thing that she does in addition to serving as a board member, she is the president of the Alexander County Public Education Foundation, and tonight we are going to recognize twenty-one grant recipients, largest group that has ever been recognized. So, Mrs. Ryan, please take the podium.
I will, I will.
Welcome, and thank y'all for being here. I'm excited, this is so exciting to have this many awards or grants to give out tonight. And I was just thinking, we've got, it's almost full, we're a few empty seats, but maybe one day we can do this in the auditorium. Wouldn't that be great? Let me start by telling you, the mission of the Alexander County Public Education Foundation is to provide resources and support for the Alexander County Schools to develop students with broadened life skills and educators with an increased passion, thereby enhancing and enriching the future of the community. We believe that we are helping to fulfill our mission by providing grants to teachers. We have been providing these since 2012, and at that time we set a limit of ten grants at five hundred dollars each, and we thought that was a huge goal. We have set a new record this year, yay. We are awarding twenty-one grants for a total of ten thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-six cents. This beats, this beats last year's numbers by three grants and fifteen hundred dollars. So I would like to also, I can't do this without talking about our golf tournament that we just had in October, and I want to thank everybody that supported that tournament, uh, as a player, as a, a whole sponsor, because that tournament makes it possible to give additional grants, such as we're doing tonight. So, we have a lot, I used to read and go into detail when we had just a handful, but tonight I'm going to, I'm not going to go into detail about every grant, because I know y'all just want your money. We will highlight these grant submissions on the Alexander County Schools Facebook page and webpage in the upcoming days, so you can look for that. Um, I'm going to read the name of the grant, applicant's name or names and the school, and when I call your name, please come forward, and if there's someone that I don't call that has helped with your grant, please come forward as well. And we will gather here at the front afterwards, yes ma'am. Yep. We're going to start.
So stay up here.
Yes. ACHS, we have Butch Carter, he submitted box jumps. He's probably at football practice.
Mr. Lael, will you come out and accept on his behalf? Give Mr. Carter a round of applause.
Joe Cornwell, ACHS, ceramic supplies.
Round of applause.
Emily Fox and Brian Lewis, fuel for industry and reality of money. Amanda Marshall, ACHS, hands-on supplies. Chris Marshall, ACHS, TV for the weight room.
There we go.
Tyler Mitchell, ACHS, FFA uniforms. Elizabeth Turner, ACHS, ACT prep incentives. Mary Brown and Kristy Hall from the Early College Biology and Chemistry Materials. Danielle Ortiz, Bethlehem Frog Dissection Materials. Liz Cronin, Jason Irkman, Brian Wisen, East Al, East Alexander Middle School, data sheets Melissa Cantor, Hidnite, Blue Yeti microphones. Hope Laird, Hidnite, EC items for self-contained classroom. Nikki Stevenson, Hidnite, Poland One. Heather Wegant, Hidnite, EC classroom materials, and Amy Daigle is accepting on her behalf. Liz Cronin, Ruth Ann Jacobs, Taylor's Bowl for art supplies. Heather Houston, West Alexander Middle School, Leonardo da Vinci building. Don Robinette, West Alexander Middle School, cooking and baking supplies. Aslan Barnes Wittenberg, Storybook STEM. Amber Mellon Wittenberg, three to five club activities, and Melinda Glenn is going to accept for her. And Jessica Esposito, Digital Learning Innovation, Innovation Specialist here for the Alexander County Schools, STEM Supplies.
Wow, that's awesome.
And on behalf of the foundation, I want to congratulate all of you, and I know you put a lot of hard work in, and we're glad that we could help in just a small way.
Okay. Dr. Cal Redd. I'll turn it over to you.
I think we're going to have to do three rows, yes?
We'll try.
Okay.
Everybody needs to take like, uh, two wide steps. Alright. That's pretty good. Andrew's pretty much up with my.
Yeah. Nobody here?
Probably not. Getting hurt with Jack.
Can you do it? Cause he's lost his leg.
I can't believe he was on the front.
How about?
See, you can do it anyway.
And Jacob, will you and Priya stand again in the middle as the two tallest on that backside?
I don't feel like me, Don.
She likes symmetry.
Sort of a stare stare.
Side by side. There.
Short take, man.
There we go.
Make symmetry work.
Tyler, you're short.
Okay, can you take it for us like down about, there you go. Put your face in between two, but you guys are like opposite. There you go, there you go, there you go.
No, 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 stand. That's it, yeah. But make sure that you can see Denise's face. That's it.
Yeah, I'm a bunny here, y'all. Y'all get really good and say it.
I don't leave it, there's plenty of it. Okay, everyone, ooh, you're a wack. Crunch in as much as you can, crunch in as much as you can. Make sure you can see me, oh, I'm not seeing you. Alright, look at this way. We'll take a bunch in case you're blinkers.
Another big round of applause.
Thank you for taking time to write those grants, thank you to everybody that donates to the foundation, the golf tournament, plays golf, attends the Hall of Fame ceremony, that I'm sure is going to be mentioned a little bit later. And, uh, it's amazing how five hundred dollars, how far it can go in a classroom, uh, I can tell you from experience. If we have anybody wishing to leave, now's the time, a lot of people choose to step out, but we welcome you to stay if you choose to stay. Alright, so, uh, we have reached the public comment portion of the agenda. Do we have any additional public comment?
Okay.
Okay, we have two individuals signed up tonight to speak, and at this time I'm going to read through the, uh, public comment, uh, board procedures if, uh, you'll listen closely here. Each person signed up to speak will have three minutes to make his or her remarks. Each person signed up to speak will only be entitled to the time allotted to them, and the time may not be relinquished to another speaker. Number two, only one spokesperson will be allowed to speak for a group of individuals wishing, wishing to address the board on the same issue. Number three, speakers will be acknowledged by the board chairman in the order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from the front of the room and begin their remarks by stating their names. Comments that are deemed obscene, profane, and personal attacks on a board member or school employee will be cause for ending of a particular speaker's time as determined by the board chairperson. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the board. Number four, the public comment to the board period is not intended to require the board to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member of the board. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Number five, speakers will refrain from discussion of any of the following items, items which are closed session matters including but not limited to, the attorney-client privilege, anticipated or pending litigation, property acquisition or liquidation, or complaints about specific employees and students in open session. This is in accordance with General Statute 115C 321 and the Open Meetings Law, which protects students and employees' records. Number six, speakers will be courteous in their language and presentations. And at this time, I will recognize our first speaker, Abigail Bumgarner, and her topic is the value and importance of duly enrolled students.
Good evening, my name is Abigail Bumgarner, and I am a senior at Alexander Early College, for which I'm speaking on behalf. And we advertise ourselves to middle school students, um, we focus mainly on the challenging academics, our opportunity for a college degree, and our very supportive family environment. These aspects of AEC are crucial to the success of our students. Without us being a separate entity, our students would not be as successful nor as involved as they are now. As a school, we take pride in our student leadership, which is largely available because of our small student body. In addition, our rigorous curriculum and outstanding teachers and instructors prepare students not only for the college courses we take through CBCC, but also for the courses we take if we choose to go to a four-year college or university. AEC also prepares students for the expectations of the workforce after graduation. For most students at our school, their futures are dependent on graduating high school with their associate's degree. AEC encourages students to take risks and embrace opportunities to build future leaders. Two students from AEC's first graduating class have gone on to complete their university-level educations in order to serve their home community as with a social worker and a math teacher at Alexander Central beginning in January. In my own experience, I would not be able to afford the college I wish to attend without already having both my associate's degrees in science and arts without having to pay tuition for them. My peers also experienced the gift of a virtually free two-year degree as first-generation college students, because they are not, because they are able to experience the gift of education that generations before them could not. In our family environment, Alexander Early College offers an alternative option to a traditional high school setting. It also provides parents a choice to help their, excuse me, to help push their students to a strong academic focus in their school career through the culmination of a college degree alongside their high school diploma. Because we have a small school, student input is of utmost importance in regard to what the school focuses on and chooses to prioritize. During this stage of learning and development, it is important for students to feel heard and their feelings expressed. So, the family environment that we have and take pride in would not exist if we were to combine with Alexander Central. Another thing we tell students during the recruitment process is that the Early College is not for everyone. However, we also understand that Alexander Central is not for everyone either. Both schools have their own unique qualities that draw students to either one side or the other. It is these unique qualities and differences between both schools that further prove the fact that both schools should remain separate because of what each one brings to the table for its students. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize Lucas Ritchie. Lucas's topic is Alexander Early College and the opportunities it brings.
Good evening, I'm Lucas Ritchie, student body president at Alexander Early College, and I'm also the cadet master chief at our local NJRTC unit here in Alexander County. I would like to remind the board of the importance of having an early college in this county. At AEC, students have the ability to earn both their college, their two-year degree in either science or arts, as well as receiving their high school diploma. This helps both students get their education at a lower cost than if they did if they went to a, directly to a four-year program, sets both unprivileged and abridged students to get an early head start. Furthermore, AEC allows students to find both safe and small environments that students specifically choose to go to because of those reasons. Also, AEC participates in volunteering around our county. Our Beta Club, Interact Club, and our local NJRTC unit, and the students that participate in those clubs do many things around the county to make the county a better place overall. Thank you very much for both your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, at this time, uh, on our agenda, we have a public hearing on the Senate Bill Forty-nine Parents Bill of Rights, and I will note that, uh, this public hearing is in regards to, uh, the bill that was recently, uh, put into law, and, uh, we have a few policies in our board packet, Policy thirteen-ten slash four thousand and two, thirty-two-ten, thirty-five-forty, forty-three-thirty-five, forty-seven-twenty, sixty-one-twenty, and seventy-three-hundred. So at this time, if I have a, if I could have a motion from the board to enter into a public hearing?
Motion in.
Second.
Got a motion by board member Aguas, second by board member McLean. Uh, all those in favor of entering into public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we are in public hearing. Do we have anyone speaking on behalf of the Parent Bill of Rights? Seeing no one speaking on behalf of it, uh, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close?
Got, got a motion to close by board member Reese, and a second by board member Aguas. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we're out of public hearing. Alright, uh, board members, you have your consent agenda in front of you. What's the pleasures board for the adoption of the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Second. Got a motion by board member Dagan Hart, a second by board member McLean. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent, consent agenda is approved. Uh, at this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Amy Daigle, principal of Hidnite Elementary School, for our Hidnite Elementary School update.
I was warned that this had been turned or left on, so I'm not sure if it will flip through my presentation or not, but I'm going to try, so. Good evening, Dr. Hefner, Chairman Robinson, Vice Chairman Aguas, and board members, I appreciate you having me here today. It's always a pleasure to speak on behalf of Hidnite Elementary. Um, so first things first, no, I'm not crazy, yes, I know there's cassables on that slide. Um, if you recall, last year, we choose at Hidnite to focus with a heat, a theme every year. The theme is nothing more than to keep us engaged and to constantly keep our, our goals and our discussions, um, at the forefront of what we do every day. So, last year was football, that came a little bit easier to me. Um, the sit team thought it would be funny to give me a challenge this year with farm to table. Thus the reason we are the Phantom Family Farm. So I also want to say though, before I start, I'm going to highlight a lot of things going on and a lot of people doing great things in Hidnite, but I want to say altogether, I, I couldn't say enough positives about all the people that come and show up to work every day. Hidnite needs every person that they have in that building, and they come and they work really hard, and I appreciate them all, so I wanted to make sure I said that. Alright, so what matters most to Hidnite, um, our mission, and we built it from scratch last year, um, really is to cultivate leaders. We want to grow leaders, and we want to work with our community to do that. Um, I won't spend a ton of time on this, because I spoke to you a lot about it last year, the core focus is there, the safe, the nurturing and exciting environment, um, and then the one thing I want to stand out is just that we are interested in partnering with the community in order to make our school a success. So again, I'll go back to say that the theme there, again, just keeps us engaged. Our culture core communication, those are our harvest baskets, those are what we, uh, are going to summarize our goals in. Um, the picture on the top right there is showing you a board in our PLC room, our staff learning room, where every week before Ms. Buff, our wonderful curriculum coach starts, she asks everyone to kind of record on a vegetable or fruit sticky, um, something that they have done in that week to contribute towards our, um, culture core or communication goals. So just explain a little bit about those goals. I want to thank, uh, Crystal Hope, actually, who, um, at our leadership meeting taught us about cascading goals, and so that's why that picture's there. We really took a look, um, with our sit team and discussed how do our goals connect to what the district is focused on this year, and then how do we drive that down to the teacher and then to the student? So I'm going to talk a little bit about those today, I won't spend a tremendous time here, but just to tell you how it connects. So as you guys are all, um, aware of the four key parts of, um, our district goals, our first one is about instructional excellence and standards alignment. The goal is to, through a solid MTSS process, maintain or achieve eighty percent proficiency. So at Hidnite, our goal was to focus on improving our MTSS processes and our data collection so that we can speak to data-driven decisions, and the goal is to increase our proficiency by five percent, seven percent with, for our students with disabilities, and I'll talk more a little bit about that later. Um, the second one for the district is to increase family and community engagement. I challenge you to find a school that that's not one of our focuses, but one of our goals and specifics was to market and rebrand some things, so you're going to see a whole lot about heroes in the next little bit. Improve operational effectiveness and transparent communication, again, I think you won't find a school that won't say they're shooting for transparent communication. As far as operational effectiveness, we decided to focus a lot on building, um, agency and advocacy and leadership for our students. And then the last one, just building that professional capacity, again, our goal was to improve our retention rate and, as well, um, as build some opportunities for our staff to grow professionally. So I'm going to talk about each of those in terms of culture core and communication. Okay? So culture, our culture focus was about the professional capacity and student agency, so I have a lot of pictures for you, and I'm just going to talk about them a little bit. The first one there on the left, um, I know it's a little hard to see, but that is, um, Ms. Buff and I meeting with our, um, Student Advisory Council. So our Student Advisory Council meets with leadership, um, once a month, as directed by our, and organized by our fantastic counselors. Um, so they meet with us and they give us really honest feedback. It's amazing, if you ask the students, they'll tell you exactly what they think and what they want to see changed. Some of the changes that they pride themselves in or are include, um, ice cream. So I know that Ms. Pottle, I've never really spoken to her about the fact that we offer ice cream at school, but, um, our students met last year and they said, why don't we have ice cream? My parents talk all the time about the fact that we had ice cream at school. And so I told them I would take it to our cafeteria manager, and I explained to them a little bit about the laws, but we did take it to the cafeteria manager. I don't know if she took it to Ms. Pottle or not, but the next thing I know, we have ice cream in our schools and our kids think they did that. I'll take it. I'll take that as a win because that was a significant discussion, um, for them. Another one includes our breakfast organization. Um, we changed the way we do breakfast for safety reasons, they came back and they said, I don't like this. The, the third, fourth, and fifth especially, I don't like it, I can't do this, this or that. After explaining to them the challenges, they decided to take it on themselves, that if I would agree to change the process the way they wanted it, they would guarantee that there wasn't anybody messing with the bathrooms, that there wasn't anybody on halls that there wasn't supposed to be in, and that kids weren't visiting classrooms they weren't supposed to be in. And I'll tell you, we changed that almost two weeks ago, and I'm telling you right now, they're better monitors than staff could ever be because we haven't had any of those issues. So it's really just a chance for our students to give us their opinions and make changes. Um, the next picture over is Ms. Bailey Cody, and I'm excited to announce leadership opportunity for her, so she is still a Beginning Teacher Three in our district, but was approached, um, by Dr. Klore, um, about leading the EdTPA process, and I won't spend a ton of time on that other than to tell you that that's the process all teachers have to go through to be licensed, and Beginning Teachers who are in that process need a lot of support. So, um, Ms. Cody has been selected as a leader for our district to kind of help our BTs in our district get through that process, um, and she's already shining so bright, um, she has been asked by ASU to continue coming to meetings beyond what they were supposed to just for our district, so I wanted to highlight that. Uh, in the middle there, we have Fatima, who is standing with our new Hero Shield, that is another change, actually, that our, um, Leadership Council made, they decided that there was no female hero, and they disagreed with that. So our wonderful Alyssa Williams painted us a new mural, an individualized mural, and, um, our kids love that. Um, next to that, we have Olivia with her Little Critters Club, another change that our Student Council changed, they decided they wanted clubs. So our wonderful counselors, again, took over making that happen, and that is a, that is a large process, guys, to have almost four hundred students move into clubs that can mix them anywhere from K-two or three-five and match it to teacher interests and what the teachers are capable of doing. Um, they love the Little Critter Club. Oh, I guess I probably shouldn't be sharing first names, but next to that, we have Brianna, who was, um, doing our slime making for our terrific kids. Then we have, uh, Ms. Simpson and, uh, Ms. Davis, that was when we took our staff to Daniel Boone Inn, that we went to Daniel Boone Inn as a part of our, um, farm-to-table, um, practice there and had a great time just kind of bonding. Our staff here at Shield Award, uh, Ms. Stephanie Campbell, our data manager, was the first to receive that, you have Isaiah- You have Isaiah with our breakfast for Bus Riders of the Month. Then you have Ms. Yoder, another one of our Beginning Teachers, and Sophia, one of our Ms. Wiggant and Ms. Laird students, who helps deliver our store dojos that I spoke to you guys about last year. They love delivering, and it really is our own version of Amazon, or life is better than anything. Then we have our Camp Food Drive, which I am proud to say our students did there. That is Philip sitting with the Camp Food Drive. We did come in well under what our goal was, but we were still the top provider for schools, and that speaks volumes. And for that reason, Ms. Jenkins and I will be riding tricycles around dressed like heroes tomorrow, so watch for those, watch for those pictures because we did achieve a milestone there. And then the bottom left is the team that we took to Chicago. I'm sure you've seen it. We were asked by Old Dominion University, as well as University of South Florida, to come and present on our student agency and advocacy efforts, and we had a blast doing that, and I was extremely excited to represent Alexander at a national level. Then we have our students here at Shield Award, so that is something that's passed class to class. I know I talked about the staff one last year. This year, what they do is focus on our Hero Matrix, and when this class receives the award the next month, their job is to find another class to pass it to and then tell them why. So for example, that one is Ms. Payne's class passing it to Ms. Cook's class, a kindergarten class, explaining to them how the helpful they are in the hallways and how responsible they are in the hallways coming back from lunch, because that's where they overlap. So I know that was a lot, but man, there's a lot going on at Hidnite, okay? At least there's only three, right? All right, so core practices, as you guys know, the MTSS process has attendance, social emotional behavior, and academics. I could spend hours talking to you about the things that we're working on there, but I have just a few. The top two left pictures there are students of ours receiving, the first one on the left is receiving an award from Ms. Sowersack, who is our split social worker between Wittenberg and us, who is also amazing. She organized incentives for them, and we did have one of our highest attendance rates for students in September. October with sickness has been a whole different ballgame, but that is her taking one of them to the book fair as their reward. Then we have the next one who's holding up her data notebook. So we have developed a Hero Time, so it's 15 minutes every morning where we focus on being heroes. So one day is focused on our behavior matrix items, which you can see in the bottom right there with our hero traits. Another day is focused on our new second steps curriculum for social and emotional that the district has, and then other days are doing student attendance data notebooks and then one-on-one check-in, check-outs. It's about relationship building, so that's what that time is spent for. It's also to focus on zones of regulation. So as a whole school, we have rolled out zones of regulation. Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for bringing that to us. It just helps students articulate where they are feelings and mood-wise in a simple color, and then to really reflect on, okay, it's not that this is not how I should feel or where I should be, it's, is this the right time for me to be expressing it, and am I expressing that emotion in a healthy way? So it makes for some great conversations. And then, of course, that's attendance and behavior. Academics, there on the right, we have Malachi, who is so excited because he did literacy surgery. I've seen a couple other schools do it, so it is so much fun to watch. They just get really engaged, they don't even know they're learning. Bottom left, we have Ms. Lohman doing our Hegarty practices. I've been very pleased with how the staff has taken over the movements. You know, when you think about a curriculum that you're teaching, it's, it's hard for a teacher to pick up a new curriculum, and they've been watching videos to make sure their hand movements are right, and our kids are just soaring with it. Are you reading like a hero? So I told you guys, you're gonna, you're gonna see heroes a lot. Our sit team decided that our school needed to have a consistent focus and acronym for reading strategies from kindergarten through fifth. So by the time they get to third, fourth, and fifth, they know what heroes means, but they're learning the H and the E in one of our kindergartens and so on, until that they're able to use that as the strategy. It keeps that consistency every year, but has all the components of the strategies every other school is using. It's just a rebranding. And then the next and last picture I'll really highlight, there is one of our students using our virtual reality, and again, I couldn't thank Ms. Cantor enough for the technology that she has advocated for for our students. In that picture, they are actually preparing for a Body Systems Quiz in the fifth grade, and they were doing a virtual reality activity to study the parts of the system there. So I was really impressed, and the kids had a blast, and aced their test. Love that. And then I guess I really should say, that is our new Hero Matrix. I would like to give a shout out to Ms. Davis, Davis and Ms. Wiggant for rebranding our Hero Habits Behavior Matrix. That is a lot of work right there, and they did it, including pictures for our K2 over the summer with feedback from Mr. Berry, our behavior specialist, about what maybe we were missing and what points we could hit a little bit harder. So that's a lot of core in one, too, but again, lots of great stuff. Communication, family and community engagement, so we have our Camp Food Drive there on the top. I want to say, we have always tracked engagement with people that we brought in the building, and I think that's really important, but I would also like to highlight that I think engagement looks different, different than it's ever looked before. And our Facebook engagement is skyrocketed, and I will take it. And I know there are some things about just posting too much, but I find right now, the more positive I put into the community, the more positive we're getting back. So we're gonna continue to do that. We have partnered with our dental clinics there, our local health services to bring in the dental clinics. I also would be remiss if I did not highlight Officer Bubba, or Bubbles, Officer Bubbles, as some of them call him. I couldn't say enough positive about Officer Bubba and him being a part of Phantom Nation. He really truly is. And the Sheriff's Department and the school district for working that out, thank you. If you came one day, you would think he was the president. You would, you really would. And of course, we partnered for Fire Safety Week, and then the far-right pictures are our new Reading Night Strategy, which I could go for details on it, but ultimately was do a whole group reading thing, and we had a blast. The kids danced. And again, Ms. Lohman, Ms. Lackey, Ms. Davis, they really took a leadership role in making that happen. If you could have seen them doing the Mamba, you would know why it's so good. The last thing on that I want to call out is that bottom-left picture, the Cookbook. So one of the new engagement strategies we're gonna try, and it rolls out here in November, is a Phantom Family Cookbook. Farm to Table, guys, right? They gave me that challenge. Every student will take home a recipe sheet and will be asked to fill it in. So it's literacy, they're writing, and return it. We hope for 100% participation, and we will build a Phantom Family Cookbook that will hopefully go home with students in December. We challenge each of you to submit a recipe. And we've got some things going on with some local community churches to help us out with maybe giving some families some food to make some of these recipes that we come up with. More on that. Ed crop pots, yes, and to help give families some crop pots. So lots coming up on that.
Nice.
All right, so last but certainly not least is to just say thank you to all of our community partners. I think I've listed them all, but my goodness, we've been so blessed. I don't know that I did, but I want to give a huge shout out to each of those. One, though, you have on your table right now, the Hive. Mr. Craig Conley is a local bee farmer, and again, I told you guys, we were focused on Farm to Table, so what you have is what our staff was given as their opening gift is fresh honey from the hive and a packet of biscuit mix. Right, I know I overwhelmed you. Are there any questions?
Just a comment, your, your energy and your passion and your leadership is self-evident, and it's really quite a compliment to your team, and it's wonderful to see the absolute north, the true north focus that you bring to the team. Well, thank you.
Well, I would have to thank you. I have to say I did leave that apart because I know Dr. Curry presented on it already, but I have to give shout outs for what they've been able to do. Our growth alone went from negative 5.26 to negative 2.09. We might not have met growth, but we were 9100s from it, and we'll come out of it. I have no doubt whatsoever that we will no longer be a low-performing school. And the efforts that they've made to make the difference for our students with disabilities and our MLL students is just, I, I'm amazed every day when I walk in that building. We'll get exactly where we want to go, it just might take a little time, but thank you for that.
Where did you get the Leadership Council idea from?
Actually, that is something that our counselors brought to us. We, because our mission was about leadership and about cultivating leaders, we had to step back and really ask ourselves, well, what do we do to really cultivate and harvest leaders? And when it came down to it, we're missing our number one stakeholders. So I have to say that between our counselors and our school improvement team, they said, "Let's give it a shot," and that was one of the reasons we were invited to Chicago to present. It's not common to have student voice for K5.
Sure.
People underestimate what power they can bring to it, but let me tell you, they've got some opinions. They've got some big opinions.
I love it. I love it. Thank you for sharing that.
I gotta give credit to everybody else. Sometimes I come with crazy ideas, sometimes they do, but we make it work.
Thank you for what you're doing every day. Thank you. Please, please keep promoting all the positives. You said you felt like you was, please keep doing that. I heard that lunch with your Officer Bubba is a very popular reward.
He was worried about his schedule the other day. He said, "Fill it up."
He does, he, so he has a very packed schedule between, he leads one of our student leadership groups, too. He has the security team, so about it, once a week, he has our security team that goes around and checks doors with him and does all of that, but then he also has a very busy calendar for lunches because students can purchase a ticket to eat lunch with him with their dojo points. In fact, it's awesome because it's free for us, because they're all working for. I love it. Although I get a little intimidated because they're not really fighting as much for lunch with the principal. I love it.
They're looking out for that opportunity to make slime with the principal.
Very true. We do make a lot of slime, and we have a lot of fun with it, and I know the other schools do, too.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Dagel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize Ms. Kathy Cottle, our School Nutrition Director, for our CEP Meals Update.
Chairman Robinson, board members, Dr. Hefner, thank you for allowing me to come and present where we are right now. I know you've got a paper on your, at your station there showing, I didn't get it to Deborah until another evening because I filed a claim with DPI on Monday morning to see where we were in October. But if you'll look at the month of October, you can see our breakfast this year over last year has increased by over 400 meals per day for break, for breakfast. Lunch has increased 1,100 meals per day, basically, and our supplemental sales, you know, the kids eating free breakfast and free lunch, we did that through COVID, we're already up to where the COVID meals were for pickup, everybody free. So we're doing really well, which is real good. Our supplemental sales, and Ms. Dagel, you haven't left, let them think they made that decision and made it happen. It was merely an economic decision. We have gone from 584 supplemental sales a day to 1,400, and I just looked at the month of October, 550 of those were ice cream sales per day. So we started out with ice cream to see how it would work. I just had it added to our food bid, food supply bid with US Foods. They provided some, and we're getting it with them to see how it goes. Obviously, it's going well. So I'm looking at doing a bid now. My problem is not finding enough vendors to bid on the ice cream. Most everybody in the area is using Hershey's. I've contacted their rep, and he said, "We're, we can't do anymore." I have found one vendor in Wilkes County is using, and I'm working on their bid right now, getting a bid out, and I will look for, if you know of anybody who does ice cream, let me know. We're going to try to get that bid out by the end of the week so we can start December with ice cream.
Now, I have a question, Kathy. Clarify, because I know that the ice cream has to meet certain nutritional guidelines. So when you say notify anybody that's an ice cream distributor?
That would be, that's part of the contract. It has to meet smart snacks.
Okay.
So right now, I talked to one person, he said, "I need to know how much you're doing because the, Wilkes County's only getting ice cream twice a month." I said, "I don't know if we have freezer space for twice, twice a month." He said, "So tell me how many you're doing. Is it over 500 a day?" I said, "That's right." So it's, it's going to be rough finding somebody who can supply us that much, at least with US Foods, we're getting with deliveries. But I did the, the claim with DPI because all the meals are free, and our claim for October was over $317,000, where last year, October claim was $215,000. And that was adding in, I took the number of paid meals last year and what the maximum amount we would get for those added to what the reimbursement was. So this is really a true picture of how much better we're doing this year. And, and that's really good because the month of November is going to kill our budget. As you know, we've been given the task of giving our employees a 4% raise, which is retroactive from the 1st of July. Most people don't know that when we have to give a raise, they mandate it and don't give us any money for it. So we gotta sell that ice cream. Our budget in November, we're gonna take a great hit because we will be paying retroactive pay at this higher rate from, so it's going to be big. December is always a bad month because, not a bad month, but a month that is very costly because we have people who take their annual leave days and their holiday pay. Again, child nutrition pays that out of their budget. There's no money from the county that goes for their, their benefits. So that is always a rough month economically. But I am quite sure if we can keep up at the rate we're going, we will, we will be fine, and we will, my hope is that we can continue for the four years of giving all of our children, Alexander County Schools, free meals, breakfast, and lunch. That's my goal, and it's looking good. I think we will make enough so that we can keep the high school, middle schools on the CEP program as well.
So the level of federal and state reimbursement is $300,000 per month?
No, no, no. It's based on the number of meals you serve. It's completely based on the number of breakfasts and lunches and snacks that are served.
And what's the dollar value of all the free meals that we have made available?
In October, it was $370,171.52. That's, that's our meals and snacks.
So the cost avoidance to our parents in the community, year over year, is $100,000?
No, our cost value to our parents is going to be in the millions this year, I'm sure. Because if they are saving $370,171.52, that's what they're not paying for meals. You know, we would get our free meals and, and the reduced, the state just, you know, agreed to make lunch a permanent reimbursement for the reduced students. So our reduced students and free students will be the only ones getting free meals. But, you know, I haven't broken it out to say how many paid students, because we don't know exactly how many.
Now, what's, what's the message that I'm looking for is how much you're contributing to the community for letting our folks in the community keep that money that they would not have spent in schools?
Basically.
Well, you have, you have a daily amount. What's the reimbursement for breakfast, lunch, and a snack per day?
Of, I don't have that figure with me.
All they'd have to do, yeah, all, all they would have to do is multiply that times 20 days in a month, and that's what they're saving in their budget.
Yeah. And, you know, we don't have every, every student getting the afternoon snack. It's only those in the snack program. But this year, the parents who were in, have been in the after-school program, we got, all of our schools qualified to get free snacks. So Sandra Miller's program, nobody, they're not, she's not having to pay for the snacks either, so.
And I'm not questioning because of doubt or whatever, it's to compliment the great work that you're doing, and it's a great contribution.
To me, it's just that every child that participates is getting that free meal. It's saving $6 for breakfast and lunch, basically, close to $6 for a parent if their child eats breakfast and lunch. They're getting fresh fruits and vegetables. They're getting a variety of fruits and vegetables. I don't limit the fruits and vegetables. If we put four on the menu and the children want to get four, I do limit how many of the same thing that they get. I want them to have a variety of fruits and vegetables. So you can't get three french fries. And green beans and mashed potatoes or whatever's on the menu, because we know if they don't. One of the problems we're having, you may have heard, it's a national problem, problem right now, is with milk cartons. I don't know if you're aware of that, but we're having a terrible time with milk cartons. For a couple of weeks, we didn't have chocolate milk, and that is, that is the milk that gets our bid. However, I just did a follow-up review with Kami Lewis, our Dairy Alliance representative, because I was able to get a grant from the Dairy Alliance for the milk dispensers that y'all have, if you've been to the school, you probably tasted the milk, and it's, it's been wonderful. So we've not had a problem getting the five-pound. it's been wonderful. So, we've not had a problem getting the five-pound bags of milk to go in the dispensers. The never, manager and the people who work at the dispensers might say, it might be a little problematic. But, uh, the kids love it and, and they're, you know, there's, when I go to a meeting, people ask me, are we having a lot of mess? We don't have any mess from the dispensers. It's just, it's just been really, and, and Tina, our manager at high school, said, if you make a mess, we're gonna stop it and go back to cartons. So, they have an incentive not to make a mess. The kids do love it.
Thank you for all the work you do. You, you, you go above and beyond with, uh, and, and I always stand amazed when you give us reports. And like Mr. Agüez said, uh, it's, it's money back in our community. I mean, it's, I, as, as a parent of two kids, I have one that eats one hundred percent of the time in cafeteria and I have one's a little pickier. And, and, and I'm grateful, I'm grateful every day, uh, for what you and your staff does. And, uh, and I'll, I'll say that when I have lunch at elementary school, I try to support your ice, I'm glad to see ice cream back in school.
I just wanted to tell you that the elementary schools are having, uh, their Thanksgiving meal the day before school gets out. And high school is having their Thanksgiving meal on the tw- uh, the sixteenth. So, if you wanna have turkey and dressing, Matthew.
Well, guess what? Guess what? That would be a good little segue so that I can share. We are planning our visit to Hidnite Elementary School on that very day of the Thanksgiving meal. So, that will be an incentive for everybody to join us. Uh, more, more to come in my report. But good, good. That's good to know.
And Ms. Cottle, I'm so glad we have ice cream because the first year I served on the board, ice cream went away and my children blamed me for getting rid of ice cream. So, I'm going to tell them now, we have ice cream back. So.
And they'll say, but we've graduated, Mom.
And Chairman Robinson, I know that your picky child is now trying to try new items. So, we appreciate that. And I am doing, I am having manager send me an entree list of what they do every week to see how the menus are going. But I think the menus we've been doing lately, the kids are really enjoying and, uh, and, well, they're participating. That's enough said.
And I will say, I know Ms. Ryan, probably eight or ten years ago, the board would have to search for money to, to put in food services to make it, disbalance a budget. And it was a lot of money. So, you've done a tremendous job. So, thank you very much.
Last, last year, we spent a lot of money on equipment because we had put off equipment for a couple of years because buying a, you know, when you buy a twenty-five thousand dollar steamer, you know, that's, that's a lot of meals. But, um, I do grants when I can and we did get free steamer grants this year. Uh, one was too big to get through the cafeteria door. And we had to switch it to another school and bring their steamer there. But, but they tried every angle and it just wouldn't work. Anyway.
You do an amazing job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, we've reached the, uh, committee report section of our agenda. Do we have any committee reports to share at this time?
Well, I do. We met with the foundation committee, um, last week and our sports hall of fame ceremony is November the twentieth at six o'clock at, um, well, we'll have the reception in the cafeteria and the ceremony in the auditorium. And if you want to buy tickets or you know people that wanna buy tickets, um, there's a little QR code floating around and it's on some, some information, but it's in the GoFan where you buy the tickets for the high school sports. You can get tickets online there. Uh, we're selling them here at the Board of Education. Or if you call the auditorium, they will hold your tickets at the door and you can just pay when you pick them up. So, we hope that'll be a, a nice event and we're looking forward to it.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. Chairman, it's not really a committee report, but just a few positive things that I would like to share with the board that has been made privy to me. The other day, a retired teacher from Wake County is actually subbing in Alexander County. And she told me, she said, Matt, she said, I just want to share a positive experience with you to share with the board. She said, when I sub at the high school, she said, in Wake County, she said, there would be very few students that would stand for the pledge of allegiance. But she said, in Alexander County, she said, every child, every young adult that is in her class stands for the pledge of allegiance. And she said, that just, she said, that just touches my heart right to the core. And she went on to say that when she taught in that other county, she was actually fearful to just walk through the halls. She couldn't feel like she could be away from her desk and leave her phone on it. But she said, here in Alexander County, she said, I don't have that. So, fellow board members, constituents out there, people that's listening at home, we are doing what is right. And, you know, I want to applaud, you know, and, and then even in Ms. Dagel's, um, at, at school at Hidnite, I, I'm partial, I'm biased. I've got two children that go there. But, you know, one of the teachers this past week, my daughter had to stay at school and my son had a field trip. And our family has always been accustomed to doing everything together. And that was the first time that she was not able to be with us. And I dojoed her teacher. And her teacher quickly replied, she said, Mr. Reese, she said, we will make sure that your daughter feels safe and that she feels supported. Where else can you have that kind of, of, of level and, and, and impact? I mean, there's just, there's no words. And then to further go on, switching with the high school, I had the opportunity to go to the, the DECA club, I believe it was, had a trunk or treat. And also, the cross-country team had a 5K. Hmm. Thought I would be brilliant and, mm-hmm. If, if y'all need any kind of information about the woods back in here behind the high school, I can, I can hook you up. When, when Mr. Cornwell, before the trigger went off, when he said, just to give you a heads up, there is a ditch, a giant ditch that you will have to jump over, I raised my hand and I said, say what? In the same, you know, so I did finish and I, I think I told Rainey, I think that day whenever I crossed the finish line, I thought I was gonna meet Jesus. I, I really did. But, I finished. But I say all that to say that we live in a great community. We live in a great community. And, um, I wanna challenge folks to be a part of whatever is going on in the schools and, um, you know, to just be there. And my wife, even after the, after the 5K, Mr. Lael, one of the students was sitting there and he was absolutely respectful to her. And she told me, she said, she said, honey, she said, that just gave me the rejuvenation in, in the younger generation. I mean, there, it's, it's there. The good is there, people. It just gets diluted out by the bad. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for that opportunity for me to share.
Thank you. Any other committee reports or board member reports? If not, I'll recognize Dr. Heffner for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson. This is attached to your agenda. If you want to read it as I go through everything, tonight's a little longer than normal. But, uh, the first bullet, I just want to update everybody that the budget meetings are finishing up with staff this week. We have held focus groups in three specific areas, parents, staff and the community, to seek input as to how to best reduce our operating budget by one point five million dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As you can imagine, a lot of data has been collected and it will be disaggregated in the upcoming weeks. The top themes will be explored by the budget committee in order to make recommendations to the full Board of Education. I hope to have the major themes ranked and share with all of you by the December twelfth meeting. Bullet number two, the first nine weeks have concluded and the data looks good as far as student achievement, attendance and discipline goes. Fingers crossed that this trend continues. Bullet three, Friday, November tenth, will be a holiday for all students and staff. I want to take a moment to thank all veterans for their service to our country. We, uh, take, um, for granted.
We do.
Uh, when those folks are away from their families, they are away on holidays and special events, they miss special events, and, uh, we owe them a big thank you.
Happy birthday to you, Friday.
Yes, yes. Happy birthday.
What better gift do you get than a day off? Yes, yes. Uh, bullet number four, Thanksgiving break is also just around the corner. It will be celebrated on November twenty-second, twenty-third and twenty-fourth. All facilities will be closed those three days. Bullet five, I shared this in, some of it in my weekly highlights last week, but I'm just really proud to share some recent grant, uh, winners with you. I'm gonna start with Jessica Esposito. She was recognized tonight, but we also just found out that she has been awarded a fall ASU mini-grant totaling just under a thousand dollars. The grant will be used to fund B-Bots Go Coding, which please don't ask me exactly what a B-Bot is, but it's going to benefit all students in the seven elementary schools. And then I had the honor of attending a luncheon in Statesville on Friday to recognize four Energy United grant recipients, Paige Jackson, Shelley Kane, Christine Ford and Taylor Galyon. And I polled the group, Taylor was a second time recipient of a Broad Ideas Grant, but the other three teachers were first time award winners. And I just ask you, board and community, to congratulate all of these outstanding teachers. I will say this, an unwritten grant is never funded.
That's right.
You can count on that. So, it takes work and, uh, I just commend them. Bullet six, the School Board Association Conference is going to be held in Greensboro next Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. I look forward to this annual event as I always learn a great deal at the conference and also I, I learn a lot in the breakout sessions. Bullet seven, I too have exciting news. It's about our transportation department. I learned last week that our efficiency rating has been released and it is now at ninety-nine point four-nine percent. That is an increase from the eighty-five percent proficiency rating that, um, ef- efficiency, excuse me, rating that we had during COVID. This rating is compared to all one hundred counties. It's based on the number of students riding buses, the number of buses operating within the fleet and the amount of money being spent within the department. Our funding is also based on a higher efficiency rating. So, guess what that means? When you jump from eighty-five to ninety-nine, that means more money will come to the transportation department. So, congratulations to them. Bullet eight, budget committee members, I need you to check your calendars for Tuesday, November twenty-eighth. If that works for you, I would like to schedule a budget committee meeting to discuss the draft budget. Um, you are well aware, we were delayed in getting a state budget and that has delayed the entire budgeting process. I would ask that you make plans to attend because at the December twelfth meeting, I would like for the budget committee to, uh, uh, present or, along with Sharon Mahaffey, to present the twenty-three, twenty-four budget because we really need to get that approved and, and move along with that.
Will we have an opportunity to discuss twenty-four, twenty-five action plans at that same meeting or are we gonna schedule a separate?
Uh, all that I'm planning to share at the December meeting will be the top themes that have been gathered in the data collecting process. Yes. Uh, bullet number nine, the holiday card contest has, has begun. You know, that's a favorite with me. The winning cards will represent the district and the winning students will be recognized to receive a prize at the December board meeting. The deadline for entries will be November seventeenth. That's a week from Friday. The deadline is, uh, three o'clock that day. So, everyone, if you would like to submit an entry, make sure that you have done that by next Friday at three. Uh, also, I'm proud that we've renewed our Alexander All-Star recognitions on social media. I've already seen several in the past week. This is a way for parents, students and the community to recognize our outstanding staff members. We appreciate Hindren Insurance and Cody Hindren for sponsoring this partnership and the special recognition. Bullet eleven, Chris Campbell and I met with the commercial Realtor, her name is Jenny Eckard, last week. The listing contract has been reviewed by our local attorney. She gave me the green light this morning. I've signed the contract and returned it to the Realtor today. So, today begins the official listing of the old Wittenberg property. It is listed for five hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars for any interested buyers. So, we would certainly love for that to happen as well. Bullet twelve, lastly, uh, please mark your calendar for Tuesday, November twenty-first. A lunch and tour have been scheduled at Hidnite Elementary School and all board members are invited to attend. We will meet in the school's office at eleven-thirty that day for the special visit and Kathy Cottle a special lunch. Let's hope that pumpkin pie is on the menu. And then I have something for you. Uh, I was challenged to create a, a one-page scorecard that I could share with you all monthly to, uh, I guess demonstrate the health of the organization. I'm not sure that numbers do that justice. I think that the health of an organization is more than numbers. But this is just something that I, with the leadership team's help, uh, that we've played around with. Uh, you see that right now, enrollment, that's easy to communicate monthly, bus ridership, the efficiency rating, I could, I could give that to you two times a year. Family engagement, that's a little harder to quantify. But Andrea Robinette and, uh, Dr. Dalrevis are working with a grant from the state on establishing a family academy. This was born out of the strategic plan two years ago. What we've learned so far is families want information on financial literacy, how to unplug from technology for themselves as well as their children, tips for parent-teacher conferences and things like that. Andrea Robinette and Dr. Dalrevis, uh, met with a steering committee on October twenty-sixth. That group is made up of counselors, teachers and parents, and they will get input, input, excuse me, from parents and staff in some upcoming surveys as to plans as far as talking, um, points and, and different things for that academy. I don't know if that interests you under family engagement or if you would just like to know how many system-wide activities have taken place in a month, but give that some thought. Also, testing data, I could certainly share information with you for beginning of the year, middle of the year and end of the year. But there's really not a testing element that I could share with you every month. So, think about that. Other things on the document that you're going to give me feedback on, slap assessments. Uh, some of you probably don't even know what a slap assessment is. But that is something, it's a term given to potential suicide threats where assessments are done. So, you can see a number there for October. You see threat assessments and those are, uh, in situations where things have occurred that, uh, required a threat assessment team to convene and discuss, uh, some concerns. You see there also, I can easily give you the number of exceptional children every month, the number of 504s, health plans, things of that nature, individualized, uh, emergency action plans. But really what I'm looking for is input from you. What do you want to know? I've listed on that, uh, page, staff turnover. We had four staff members leave the system during the month of October. Um, I just need to hear from you. So, I would encourage you to mark on your paper suggestions or things that maybe you would like to hear about every month and I will take that, uh, and go with it. But this is just a draft of something that could certainly materialize from the, the one-page document.
This covers a lot of areas. Um, and I know every, like, testing's not gonna be on every one.
Right.
But I, I like what you're doing and I don't know what the family academy would entail, but if you can gather, if we start something like that and you can gather numbers or information or.
Or just give you, yes, like, updates of, of how things. Yes, like updates of, of how things have been attended, what the topic was. But I think that's brilliant as far as to go straight to parents, to see what they are interested in and what they want more of. I will tell you that it is very difficult. I talk to high school administrators routinely. It is very difficult to stay ahead of children on technology. And we have a lot of grandparents raising children. And I think they would be hard-pressed to stay on top of some of the technology that is available to a child on a cellphone. So things of that nature, we want to partner with parents and families. We want to help them and to educate them and to make them, um, know how much we appreciate their partnership. And, uh, so anyway, but that is, is something that materialized from a strategic plan. And, uh, that's the purpose of a strategic plan, to always do it better. So questions, comments?
So the budget meetings have wrapped up. Uh, all those are done?
No, they're not. They're finishing this week.
Okay, and this week would be school improvement teams, I assume?
Yes.
So I know there was a lot of questions about staff being involved after the town hall. And, uh, can you kind of allude to how that was addressed? Cause I know, I personally encouraged them at the end of our town hall when we did our presentation, to everybody in that auditorium to sign up. And, uh, I know I asked Dr. Dalrevis that night how many people had signed up and this was before there was an official count. And, uh, it was like in excess of 100. Can you kind of update us on roughly where we was at, even if you don't have the number exactly? Cause there was a little bit of concern about teachers and staff members that signed up that night that was or was not included in the follow-up. And I know that you, can you kind of update everyone, so make sure everybody's on the same page, how that was handled?
Well, I think I'd like to start by talking about data that's credible. This is the best example that I could give you. If you go to a church and you hold four different positions in the church, maybe you're the choir director, you're the treasurer, you know, whatever it may be, and there's a church decision made, you don't get to vote four times based on your four roles. You'd vote one time as a church member. And that's how you keep data credible. At least that's my attempt in doing this during this process. Yes, every staff member or the majority of the staff members that work in this school system could have, if I had allowed participation in all three groups, they could have said, well, I'm a parent, I'm a community member, and I'm a staff member. But that, that sways data when you give one person three voices. So there was some misunderstanding as far as sit team members. That was who, and, and, and I need to go on record too, as saying, just because you're not an elected sit team member at your school does not prevent you from going to a sit meeting. Anybody can go to a sit meeting. The team though, they are the ones that typically will vote, the team members. So when principals scheduled sit meetings, the blowback I heard was, oh, I only talked as a professional. I didn't talk as a parent or a community member. Well, I've made decisions in this school system for 35 years based on what I would want for my children. So it was hard for me, in all honesty, to understand that argument that the parent voice didn't bleed through with the suggestions given at sit. But regardless, let's say that was the case. I went back to the principals and I have a number of them sitting in here right now. And I said, go back to your schools and hold a second round of sit meetings, which those are the ones finishing up this week because anybody that felt that they did not have a voice, they were given that voice in the second round of sit meetings. So that is how that has been addressed. It's the fairest way. I know that it was addressed. But again, I'm just trying to keep data as valid and reliable as possible in this process. Because what we don't want is for anybody to ever say, well, because of the number of staff members that you have, that's no secret that they had the loudest voice because they got to speak multiple times. All of that, all of the data will have been collected.
So we should not have any members of our staff feel disenfranchised in the process?
Well, I can't assure you of that because I can find some disenfranchised about every day of the week. But about this process, they have had every opportunity to participate if they chose to.
No one had the door closed on them. Everyone had an opportunity to participate. It was their choice to participate.
That is correct.
That's a true statement.
That is a true statement.
At the school improvement teams was the same document used that was used at the parent focus groups and the breakouts at the.
The same three questions were asked in every meeting.
And on that, in that note-taking, it was not just like top three topics in that room. It was supposed to be, it was supposed to be everything. So there was no top three out of that room. This is what we're going to list. It was supposed to be everything.
Every, the note-takers were to type everything.
Okay.
And that is what data will be disaggregated as far as to see what was mentioned the most often and, and that sort of thing. It's not the three bullets. I've kept those sheets. I just was interested when the groups reported out of what some of the discussion items were.
And I'm.
All the data.
And I started on the budget committee and I would just like to say that when this process started, first of all, we've never done this before and I hope we never have to do it again. Um, but I will say that in our budget meeting, we broke it down into three segments, parents, community. And I will be the first to say that Dr. Heffner was the one that said she wouldn't do the process if staff was not included. So that's how we came up with three sets or three groups of, of people that we, we talked with. Maybe there was some confusion, maybe communication, it could have been communicated differently. We'd never done it before, so we didn't have a roadmap to follow. So with the word going out, there, there may have been some misunderstanding originally. And I, I, I'm sorry for that because I was on the budget committee and, and we, um, I helped talk about these three groups. So if it was not communicated properly or misunderstood, we are sorry for that. I'm sorry for that. But not going back and, and allowing any staff member to meet on the sit teams with principals and, and share their concerns, that's why that was opened back up because we didn't want any staff member not to feel like they were not heard or being able to share their ideas.
The mission parameters that we had laid out were include all community members. We had a town hall that did that. We had our, our parent advisory committees, which was the first round, we achieved that, executed. And then we had our staff members, which would be a hybrid of either community or inside of the sit meetings. Uh, there was some noise with that and I think you've addressed that noise now. And not to say that the issue is noise, just saying in terms of data integrity. And so when we got together prior to the 12th and had the review, that should be pure data, a full buy, not buy-in on the initiatives, but contribution from all stakeholders.
Thank you.
And what, what do we do if there's stakeholders at this point that might raise their hand and say, I had input and I was not given a voice? Is this an opportunity to send a message out to the school systems that were closing this, these, the, the second round of the sit meetings? This is the final opportunity to have a voice in.
Well, let's hope that they would be the sit teams that haven't met yet this week because I'm finished with it. I'm finished with it with the exception of the teams meeting this week. Closes on Thursday.
All right. Any other questions? All right, at this time, uh, I'd like to recognize, um, Sharon Mahaffey for our second reading of board policy updates.
We have nine policies up for second reading tonight. Professional and staff development, dual enrollment in higher education courses, pregnant and parenting students and employees, integrity and civility, animated phone and text messaging, news media relations, insurance for student transportation services, evaluation of licensed employees, and evaluation of non-licensed employees. I've received no comment on these policies and would ask for approval on second reading.
Board members, what's the pleasure of board for approvals of the, uh, policy 1610, 3101, 4023, 4310, 5008, 5040, 6330, 7010, 7810, 7815 on the second reading?
Second.
Got a motion of Board Member Agüez, a second by Board Member Ryan. Is there any more discussion on these policies? If not, all those in favor of approval on second reading, say aye. Any opposed? Policies carry on second reading. All right, and I'll recognize Ms. Sharon Mahaffey for our Board of Education Policy Revisions First Reading.
Okay, we have three policies for first reading. Drivers' participation by historically unutilized businesses and purchasing requirements for equipment, materials, and supplies. I will try to gather some, uh, um, input on these and bring them back next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, at this time, per North Carolina General Statute 1433181186, do I have a motion to enter into closed session?
Make a motion?
Got a motion of Board Member Reese, second by Board Member Agüez. All those in favor of entering into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in closed session.